This conference will now be recorded.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start it up and shut. Okay, I'd like to call the order, the Zephyr Hills City Council Meeting of Monday, December 9th, 2024. It is 6:00 PM. May I have the roll call, please, Ricardo?
Yes. Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Lance Smith. Jody Wilkinson.
Here.
Steven Spina.
Here.
Mayor Monson.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
Matthew Maggard.
Here.
Okay, at this time, we can all rise for the invocation. It's gonna be by Pastor Darius from New Walk Church, and follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Glad to have you here. Very glad. Glad to have you here.
It's good to be here. Would you all bow your heads and join me in prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, first and foremost, Father God, we like to start off by giving you praise and giving you glory. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the things that you continue to orchestrate in our lives and the backgrounds, the things that we don't even realize you're doing. But we also thank you for the things that you continue to bless us with each and every day. Today, Father God, I lift up these counselors to you. I pray that you will continue to guide each man and woman here, that you will continue to use each one of them in a mighty way that can only come from you. We know this day is not a surprise to you, but as they take on this responsibility that you have called each one of them to, my prayer is that you would give them wisdom to continue to lead, give them guidance that can only come from you. And for the men and women that are here and all the families, I pray a hedge of protection around every person in this room. When it's all said and done, Father God, all we try to do is just to give you the praise and you the glory. And I ask all of these things, in Jesus' mighty name, I pray, amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Darius. And we welcome you to stay for the meeting if you like, but we totally understand if you have to leave too, so, but either way. I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting. And if I could ask you to check your phones and electronics, silence them. We, at the beginning, we have citizens' comments at the beginning of the meeting, and any citizen can come up and comment on something that's not directly on the agenda there. You have three minutes, and you'll need to state your name and address for the record. So Ricardo, is anybody signed to speak tonight?
Yes, I have two signed up. First, I have Nick Walton.
We, we heard you were talking, so.
Nick Walton, 2431 Mirador Lane, Wesley Chapel, 33544. I'm here representing the Sarah Vandenberg Tennis Foundation, and I'm really here just to thank the city for their support, not just at the gala, but year-round, for the local schools here and all of East Pasco. We just finished up, well, we're finishing up now, our second program at Woodland Elementary. That's first and second graders, which is a new initiative for us. Quarter one, we were in Woodland for third, fourth, and fifth graders. We did our Stewart program quarter one, and we're going to West Zephyr Hills Elementary, actually the second semester, so quarter three and quarter four. So to thank you guys, I put together a plaque here, or a little picture, with some pictures from our program, just like to present this to the city.
Thank you, Nick.
And thank you for your dedication.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Nick. All right, next we have?
Next, I have Pastor Fran Stubbs.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. Trying to fix this, okay? This should not.
You should be able to pull that down. Just your name and address, please.
Okay. 644012 Street, Zephyr Hills, 33542. Good evening, everyone. Pastor Fran Stubbs. And I'm here this evening because I wanted to be able to just make a statement to everyone. We are embarking on taking over the work that Healing Hearts Cafe has been doing over the past several years here in Zephyr Hills. I know that it is a very huge undertaking. However, we and our hearts are looking to be able to expand the program that they were doing. I know that they did great work for the homeless community. Our goal and our hope and desire is to be able to expand for families and have a resource center. One of the things that we're missing here in Pasco County on this side are resources for our family. We know that we, our families here, we know that we have a lot of issues with the children having, being able to have programming and different things of that nature, as well as programming that helps families that have food insecurities. We do have a food pantry that offers food that is available to them 24 hours a day, you know, if they are in need by emergency basis and, you know, by appointment. And so, we just, we wanted just to make the statement here that we are here for our community. We have already started our feeding program where we are partnering with several other organizations and collaborating with them, but our goal is because we have not the things that we need here in our community. That is our goal, is to extend that. We're looking to do partnerships with Pasco Hernando State College to offer classes and trainings for our families that are here because we know that they cannot get better jobs if they don't have a better education. And so, I'm gonna be coming back and forth, so you're gonna be seeing me in here, because my heart's desire is that we would be able to partner even with the city of Zephyr Hills to be a greater blessing to our city. And so, we are here next to Healing Hearts Cafe, and we overtake that program January 1. And so, we're, we've already begun our expanding and, and partners, partnerships with other organizations to ensure that we can, you know, get the program off to a good start, as well as meet the needs of the community at large. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a couple. Thank you for coming. Are you in the same location?
I am. I actually have the two buildings that are adjacent to Healing Hearts Cafe, and so we will be also taking over their building that they have as well.
And have you contacted anybody at Pasco County? Pasco County is the lead agency, and while they have programs on the west side, they also work with us on the east side. And we have been, we kind of work through our police department on homeless issues too, so you might want to contact them.
And we have. Thank you so much. And we have, we are already in contact with the CHIPS program. Yes. And every one of the organizations that have been in partnership with Healing Hearts, I have met with all of them, and we are maintaining those relationships because we don't want to lose those relationships.
All right, great. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question, Sue. Yes, ma'am. So, this is wonderful. Thank you so much for your heart and, and your passion for this task. We, you know, I, I just wanted to thank Councilman Spina and also our Chief of Police, Derek, Derek Bruin there. They really have, you know, this CHIPS program was really kind of their brainchild. And then, also, you know, we have the local Pregnancy Care Center, so if there are moms that are pregnant, there are, you know, lots of churches that have regular food feeding programs. I think the real strength that Healing Hearts had was the, the daily support for those folks who are in transition and providing a place for them to do a load of laundry, or wash up, or do whatever they needed help in, in getting an ID, those kinds of things, those very basic things that they need to get a job. So, thank you so much for your help. And, you know, the council members here, we do care about all of our residents. And, but it's, it's not just the city, it's not just the, the government's responsibility, really is the community collective. So, thanks so much again for your work.
And if I could just briefly state, I wanted to say thank you to our mayor, Mayor Melanie Monson, for all of her help and support and being able to partner with her to be able to reach our community, and it's been a great help. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Is there a phone number, or do you have a card where people can reach you?
I do have business cards, yes. And I do have a phone number, so I'll say the number out loud, just for the record.
I'd like a card, too.
Yes, and I'll give you a card. The number is 813-355-3066, and that is our office number, and we are in the office Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I'll get you a business card.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for coming.
Okay, Ricardo, anybody else signed up?
I have none other signed up for citizens' comments.
All right, does anybody wish to speak? Mr. Stovall, we have.
So, good evening, Randy Stovall, with the Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to say, I know you know this, but we do have an event here in this room on Wednesday morning, our economic summit that was hurricane'd away is back. So hopefully, you'll all be there. We'll have a good program on transportation. I think the mayor's gonna be our emcee, so that'll be fun. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Randy. Thank you for reminder.
Also, I was supposed to remind everyone that they do have the ribbon cutting for two minutes, the new two minutes, and they've asked for us to be there on Thursday if anybody has time at 11:00. So, I promised I'd ask.
Art's at 11:00. I thought it was from 11:30 to Kurt called.
I think the, I think the ribbon cutting is at noon. There you go. There you go. You know more than me. I just.
And the economic summit is Wednesday here from 9:00 to 12:00. I don't think you said it all. You got your back.
Okay, does anybody else like to speak on any matter? All right, seeing none, I'll move on to the mayor's portion of the meeting.
I'm gonna have Principal Borders come on up here with me. We love families. Come on back here.
What a great honor. Yeah.
You guys go to one side, and I'll try to come to you. How about that? Okay? What a beautiful family. So, we are beyond blessed in our community to have a principal like Principal Borders. I may cry a little bit, but he does an amazing job at our junior high, and if anyone here has ever been to junior high, you know it's the hardest school to do. And he's taken that on. And he's not just taking it on, he's excelling at it. Anytime I'm over there and I see them, the students love him, and I know that he's making a difference. Well, we are honored as a city that he was named Principal of the Year for Pasco County. So. So, him and, and he can't do it alone, this beautiful family, right? So, we wanted to do a proclamation for him. So, here we go. Whereas Pasco County Schools recognizes the contributions of its, of its administrators for their efforts within the educational system and preparing students for future success. And whereas, the Pasco County School District annually recognizes an outstanding administrator with special distinction. And whereas Joshua Borders, the principal of Raymond B. Stewart Middle School, was named the 2024 Principal of the Year, representing all principals within the Pasco County School District, a singular acknowledgement of his passion for education and ability to connect with and lead his students and staff. And whereas, Mr. Borders himself, a product of the Pasco County School System, graduating from Zephyr Hills High School in 1999, and a graduate of Saint Leo University and the University of South Florida, has previously na, has, he was previously named the 2020 Assistant Principal of the Year for Pasco County Schools. And whereas, his professional focus has been to ensure a rich educational opportunity for each child in the Zephyr Hills community. Now I, me, now therefore, I, Melanie Bar-Monson, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Zephyr Hills, along with members of city council and fellow residents of the community, proclaim December 19th, 2024, as a day to honor Mr. Joshua Borders in recognition of his outstanding leadership and continuous efforts and contributions to the students of the city of Zephyr Hills and Pasco County. Pastor Fran, you'll take one. Oh, will you take one for me? Okay. Thank you. That's my son. He follows mama's orders really well. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. We appreciate your hard work.
Just terrific. Both my kids, both my kids, yeah, graduates of Stewart B. Middle.
And thank you, and congratulations, Assistant Principal of the Year in 2020, and now Principal of the Year. And I think last year, we had, Zephyr Hills High School had the Teacher of the Year. So, we're doing really well at the school. And I, I never had you in class, but I do remember you from the high school, so. And your contributions back then when you were a student, too, so.
And you do not have to set through this whole thing. If your kids want a education in government, this is great, but we're not gonna make you.
Okay. Next up is the consent agenda items, and we have... Looks like five consent agenda items.
I move that we, oh, I'm sorry.
To the President, I move to approve the consent agenda items 2.1 through 2.5.
Agen.
I have motion to second to approve all five consent agenda items. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Spina.
Business items. These are public hearings, and we'll start off with business item 3.1. To the President, business item 3.1, it's the second reading ordinance, number 1497-24, Ordinance of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, relating to the Comprehensive Plan in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 of Florida statutes, repealing and replacing the plan's transportation element, providing authority, providing purpose and intent, providing for adoption of the amendments to certain elements of the Comprehensive Plan, repealing any conflicting provisions, providing for nonsubstantive modifications that may arise at public hearing or correction of scriptures errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading and is a public hearing. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing and turn it over to our planning director for some analysis, quick analysis. This is the second reading, so.
Good evening, Todd Vandenberg, Planning Director. As, as the council knows, the city is involved with the update of our city's comprehensive plan and all the various elements of that comp plan. We began with our original transportation element. We've renamed it now to Transportation Mobility Element for the purpose of being more multimodal, and so that was the purpose of renaming the original transportation to Transportation Mobility Element. We, we got some state funding, as you know. We did a pretty comprehensive mobility plan where we had a lot of citizen input, some stakeholders, and you probably recall the mobility plan, it talks a lot about, a lot of opportunities to improve transportation safety and multi modes of, of transportation. So then, what we used was that mobility plan to help us with a lot of the framework for the new Transportation Mobility Element. Here was the document that we finished with. We worked with Tammy Brannan Consulting on this document. Again, worked with a lot of the public and stakeholder meetings that get us to this point. And we, we did the original first public hearing back a couple months ago, and then what happens with the comp plan update, we transmit, did a transmittal public hearing, we forwarded it to the state of Florida. They reviewed it along with many other governmental entities. The state signed off on it. We didn't get any objections from any of the other governmental entities. I think staff is very pleased with the, the out, the product of this Transportation Mobility Element. So, we're proposing to, tonight, just do the adoption public hearing, and then we'll be moving on to other elements, and you'll be hearing tonight about some visioning that we have coming up with association with the comp plan update. So, here to answer any questions that you might have on this.
Any quick, go ahead.
On page 27, you talk about the Gaull Boulevard changes.
Yes.
And you say 301, and I don't know if I misunderstood this, 301 Gaull Boulevard, two-lane, bi-directional, Sixth Street Vision, two-lane, bi-directional, Seventh Street, two-lane, bi-directional. Weren't some of them one-way?
Yeah, the, 301 and, and Sixth Street are planned, at least right now. Nothing's been formalized. You know, we've been working on this preliminary engineering with DOT for many years, as we all know, and that hasn't still been completed. But as it stands right now, and the preliminary draft of the future plans is Seventh Street eventually becomes two-way traffic, bi-directional. And so, that becomes more like a complete street, two-way traffic, whereas 301 will become one-way northbound, Sixth Street is already one-way southbound, and comes, they had, all, all three streets become complete streets, but they would probably be two lanes north on, on Gaull Boulevard with one lane of on-street parking until the demand, capacity is required for that third lane. Now.
Does this mean, what does this mean, then? What does this, in the?
If you speak, it's lighting up.
Okay. I didn't, why is this in there, then, I guess?
On which page are you referring?
27.
Seven.
I'll certainly take a look at that.
All right. I'll give you this.
Okay.
But, well, even with this, because the vision has kind of gone back and forth a couple of different times. So, if, if, along with, I mean, if something was a change again, it doesn't stop us from, right, just because it was written here?
Yeah, nothing's been formalized yet. And you heard kind of what our thoughts were about having a bypass loop with that mobility plan and transportation element. And, you know, the, the goal is to kind of have this loop around Zephyr Hills. All that gets four lane, hopefully takes off some of the trips from 301 and the one-way pairs. And the intent is to design the roads where, if enough trips come off the, the bypass loop, design the roadways that we just talked about, and, and place the curbs where eventually they could all go back to bi-directional, two-way traffic. That, that's the goal with the vision. So, that'll be, continued to be sorted out as we move forward with the final engineering. Now, that South 301 has become the, the higher priority. Of course, the final design engineering on, through town gets pushed back a little bit, as we know. So, that, that'll be something we continue to work, discuss with the MPO and DOT.
Todd, I, the one thing that I have an issue with is on 301, the thought of making it one-way. I'd be concerned about it affecting businesses.
Yeah, it, it's a concern. One of the concerns we had was originally, we looked at Sixth and Seventh Street, and that, that would be fairly simple to do. However, that leaves us with Gaull Boulevard through town. And if that stays the local street, is the city gonna pay for that to be redone? It, it's millions of dollars. And that's, that's the reason, again, where if we start off with a, getting the state, the MPO state to pay for Gaull Boulevard through town, then that's done. It's done as a complete street. Again, we're preliminarily looking at the design of it, curb placements where it could be converted back to two-way traffic. But that enables us to, to get that hundred million dollar project done by the state. We pay for these major routes, the MPO and DOT, but then build the bypass loop, and then continue to revisit 301, and perhaps go back to two-way traffic. It, it's a lot, and we'll have more discussion on it, but that's kind of an overview.
What are you thinking about a timeframe?
It's difficult to say. I hate to even guesstimate. Right now, we're, we're some years off of even finishing the preliminary design and engineering. It, so we don't really know what that timetable. You know, you gotta finish the final design engineering, then you gotta get the, the whole project funded, this expensive project.
And it's like you said, the, the emphasis has been down. And it's like you said, the, the emphasis has been down on South and the three oh one instead of coming through, so. And that changes, that could change periodically, too.
Yeah, I mean, it could change.
Right.
Priorities change.
Thank you, Todd.
So, you know, we have been working, literally, you and I have been working on this project, even in my time on the Planning Commission before I became elected to Councilwoman. We would have been working on this, and we went to the mat with F, with FDOT to, to convert, you know, three oh one to a local street and create a, a more, um, a more interactive, uh, character for that street, very similar to the character of Fifth Avenue, so that, that, so that businesses can pull up, you know, patrons can pull right up in front of the businesses and do their, do their business there. With the, with the, with the advent of our, uh, the, the code changes as it relates to bringing this, the, the buildings to street side, um, what, what is, why am I, I'm having, I'm drawing a blank?
Like a complete street?
No, it was, um, form-based code, that was it. So, you know, we, we changed the code as it related to that, so then that had some impact. The other thing, as I recall, is that the availability of property and the, the chance of being able to, to take Sixth Street all the way to the end, the south end of town, is, is much more compatible or, or palatable for the DOT than trying to deal with making, you know, Seventh Street the one-way north. So I guess there's an issue with being able to get that all the way to the south end of town as a, as a, as a two-lane road.
Right.
So, I think that's what got us to where we are today. But the idea of being able, of, of treating three oh one as the, as that street, and then long-term, as that complete street, and then long-term looking at, how does this really work? We can talk about this till we're blue in the face, because again, it may not get funded for another ten years. We, may none of us be here when that happens. So, I think that, from the vision standpoint, it hasn't really changed. We don't want the businesses on three oh one to suffer from, I mean, I remember talking to people from Brooksville who said, having your major thoroughfare with thirty-year-old, fifty-year-old, hundred-year-old businesses on it is not good for, you know, creating, um, those environments for economic thriving.
And the MPO just approved the, the most recent LRTP, the Long Range Transportation Plan, and in that LRTP, all these roadways with the bypass loop, they're all programmed to be four-lanes. That's Chancy Road, County Road Fifty-four, but really bypass loops goes all the way up to Otis Allen, because Otis Allen's gonna punch out to ninety-eight, that's being four-lane, and you go across the Cossack Road, and then that, of course, goes all the way out to seventy-five. So, all those roadways are four-lane and coming down handcart, back down to Chancy, so you got that loop of roads that are all four-lane. Now, again, priorities, they change, as you mentioned, and if, if we get those four-lane roads going, uh, maybe there's an opportunity there now that the priorities for three oh one got changed. So, maybe we keep pushing to get these roads four-lane, and, and maybe that alters how DOT looks at that final design engineering. So I think those are aspects that we need to continue to look at.
And, and that was what I was gonna kind of emphasize, I, I think that's where we need to look, short-term, is on that, that bypass theory thing, because, um, and it will allow us to do what we want there, but because of growth, we, we kind of need, we need to get the truck traffic around the towns, both Zephyr Hills and Date City, and, instead of going right down through town. So I think that could make it a lot easier for us to do what we're considering doing over there anyway.
I was at the technical advisory committee, recommendatory board to MPO this past week, and I always take the opportunity, I did the same thing this past week and that last week, that I mentioned, we got four manufacturers coming, amount of square foot, number semi-trucks, this has to be a priority. Yeah, we gotta build the roads for the residential, but let's be proactive and support this manufacturing that's coming. Has to be a priority.
Unfortunately, we have an economic summit on Wednesday.
We'll be talking about this.
Which will be talking about transportation, so it's very timely, and, and actually, we'll tie right into all that, so. Does anybody have anything else?
Well, I do.
Go ahead.
I apologize for not calling you sooner and asking you this today, I, I just got tied up. Do you look at this and see what I'm talking about here, just?
I think the question, Todd, is that it, in the plan on twenty-seven, it says that we're gonna be bi-directional, three oh one, Sixth Street, Seventh Street, and A Avenue, well, A Avenue is not really a factor. But everything that we've talked about for the past twenty years says that three oh one's going one-way and Sixth Avenue's going, I mean, Sixth Street is going one-way south, three oh one's going one-way north, and then Seventh is going back bi-directional. This seems to contradict that, but I, and I don't, and I know we just had a, a conversation on it, but, um, listening, I, my takeaway from what you're saying is, the goal from this, for the city is that we create this bypass loop that's multilaned, and then hopefully we can get back to what's on twenty-seven to where three oh one is bi-directional and Sixth Avenue, or Sixth Street is bi-directional as well. Is that?
Yeah.
Accurate?
That is accurate, correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, and I'm fully supporting the bypass, and I think that's vital to what we're doing, so.
Yes, so I think, I think, I think timing, I think timing-wise.
Take, take that.
I think timing-wise, we don't know what's going to happen, because three oh one, uh, one, the one weighing of three oh one and Sixth Street was set to occur twenty twenty-seven, I think, to twenty-nine, and now it's been pushed back to, I think, thirty-one, or maybe twenty-nine, thirty-one. So, in the next two years, things may change to where the bypass happens prior to three oh one, and would, therefore, the dollars will shift as well, so.
And I'd rather see that, actually, with the bypasses, so, I'm not, I'm just thinking, we're gonna approve this today when we're, we're writing one thing, but we keep saying the other thing, and I was, I was confused.
Well, it's, whatever y'all's pleasure is, well, I'll, I'll definitely bring this up with Tammy, and we'll, we'll make the, the corrective language in that, so.
Um, well, I'm, I'm gonna first ask if there's any citizens sign, signed up to speak to this item.
I have no one signed up to speak to this item.
Okay, would anyone like to speak to this? All right, seeing none, then I will entertain a motion.
I move that we, um, approve the comp plan update ordinance one four nine seven dash twenty-four for its transmittal.
Second.
Hey, before we vote, I'll, I'll close the public hearing, and we have a motion to second to approve ordinance one four nine seven dash two four in the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Okay, uh, Planning Directors report, so Todd's up, we'll leave him there.
Okay, moving on. While we're bringing up the PowerPoint, we have a, a land use action petition that's been submitted by Wire Ranch Hotels. Um, before we get started, just wanna make sure everyone understands, this is a plan and report, there'll be no vote tonight, and, thank you. So no vote tonight, just reporting on what occurred at the, uh, Planning Commission meeting. I'll, I'll make a, a presentation, use the PowerPoint, and then we might have some folks here from the public that may want to speak. We, we, we don't have the, the applicant or their representative in attendance tonight. My understanding is they're, they're online virtually, so we can include them in, on the conversation after, as well, and then we can have some discussions, so. Yeah, here's the Wire Ranch Hotels, it involves a conditional use. There's two reasons for the conditional use, one is the proposed height of four stories, the other is for the allowed use of a hotel, which isn't permitted by right, but can be considered under a conditional use. Then the second part is a future land use map amendment rezoning, which I'll talk about that in a little bit. We'll start off with the conditional use, um, part of the petition. I know we've talked about this for quite a bit, for, for those in the public here, we wanna just go over the PowerPoint presentation, talk about where it's at. Here you can see, outline and read the location of the property, it's kind of on the north end of the city. Uh, the northern boundary is straight across from Terabella. Pon Can is, uh, on the south side, located at the east side of Gall Boulevard. Uh, Florida Villas, you can see there is the, to the west there, there's a mobile home park across the street there, and you can also see there's, well, hard to see, but there's a one-story hotel that's on the north side. Uh, area to the, to the east is undeveloped, same to the south is undeveloped. Further to the right, you can see, uh, where Zephyr Lakes Abbott Park is located under construction. And I also point out that there are some two-story townhomes that are not in place there right now, but have an approved set of construction plans on the north end there, to the, to the east of the subject property. North of Cossack Road. Here's some general site information, uh, we talked about the location, it's about eight and a half acres, it's undeveloped. The current, uh, future land use is residential urban, we'll talk about the proposed future land use in the next topic, won't get into that now. Existing zoning is R four, which stands for High Density Residential, and their proposed zoning is C one neighborhood commercial. Um, we'll also talk a little bit in the presentation about the North Three One Quarter Vision and Land Use Strategy that is a part of this area. And we have some, uh, we have a map further in the presentation about the topography. You see there about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and sixty-five feet in elevation, and it's in Blood Zone X.
You say high density, that's fourteen and acre, two and acre.
Fourteen units per acre, that's correct, because that got changed from twenty to fourteen. Yep. Here's the proposed concept plan that was submitted by the applicant, uh, that you can see, two, two hotels, four-story. Um, you can see, uh, the entryway there on the north end, um, two, two, uh, separate hotels. You can see the retention pond is located on the eastern boundary. Um, you know, the property dropped significantly from the west to the east, obviously with the location of the retention. So, just wanted to throw out there, this is a preliminary concept plan, hasn't, of course, gone through any review and approval, but we asked for a concept plan as part of the conditional use, so this is what we have provided. Uh, included the, uh, site cross-sections, again, just, uh, to confirm, we, we haven't gone through a site or engineering plan, but we did ask the, the applicant and the engineer just to, to throw out a conceptual plan, and here's a profile drawing that you can see. On the top part of the drawing, you see the, the grade, the natural grade of the, uh, elevation of, of Gall Boulevard. Then you go further to the right, and you see the DOT swell, then you, you go up, I don't know, it's about probably a ten-foot or so above the grade, it, it varies, it, it alters a little bit depending where you're exactly at. Um, so, then you should, look to the right of that, and you see some retaining walls, that first retaining wall, as proposed, again, this hasn't been a, this is just what was submitted, and they show retaining wall, and, and you can see that existing grade that goes across, that's the dash line. And then they're showing a proposed grade that would, if done by this drawing, um, it'd be about eight to ten foot of cut into the hill, and then you can see the bottom section of the drawing, uh, begin with one more retention pond, and again, you see the existing and proposed grades. But this is for illustrative purposes only, again, that's, that's all that this is for at this time. Here you can see the subject site viewed from Gall Boulevard. Um, the, the right kind of is the southern border of the property, and, um, yeah, I would say, you know, Phyllis Purvis is here, her house is just to the right of this, kind of at the top of the hill, and then, uh, as you go, uh, north on three oh one, the southern end is kind of close, it's probably, I don't know, eight, ten foot, probably lower than the, the top of the hill where Phyllis's home is, and then it goes down a little bit as you go north, which you can see in this photo here. Here's some architectural renderings that were prepared by the applicant by Harvard Jolly. We've got a, a view looking north and a view looking south. Again, uh, just asked, we, we typically will ask for renderings when we're dealing with a conditional use. Uh, with the four stories, we, we, we asked for some conceptual renderings, and this is what we had provided. Well, I, I think, uh, part of it would be yes, part of it would be yeah. You know, again, you don't really know until you get into the site engineering, though. Um, you know, they are showing a twenty-foot buffer, and, uh, depending on the grades and what they end up doing, again, we haven't really gotten into that, but obviously, we try to preserve those trees along three oh one, if at all possible, for a natural buffer. So, again, back to the conditional use, after going over the site information. Um, you know, there's two reasons we're looking at a conditional use, as I mentioned earlier. We've got that height threshold of two stories or thirty feet from, and I referenced the, the code section from the city's land development code, as well as, uh, for the use itself, for a neighborhood, uh, commercial, C one zoning. Uh, proposed hotel requires a conditional use, so those are the two things that we're, uh, reviewing and assessing in this conditional use petition. And this bottom statement here, this is at the beginning of that conditional use criteria in the city's land development code where it says, "The city council may, at its discretion, grant approval of a conditional use petition if the evidence at the public hearings established compliance with the following standards." Then we get into the standards, as you know, there's, there's eight standards that we review that are in our land development code, um, when we get a request for a conditional use. That, that's what we ask the applicant to respond to, and then staff does a review and analysis of it and provide some comments, and that's what we've done here. I, I will say, the, the, the first two conditional criteria are what we emphasized on, and I, I'll just go over those two real quick, and the first one talks about the conditional use shouldn't adversely affect or contribute to the deterioration of life or property values in the immediate neighborhood. And the applicant indicated the project will be designed to prevent or minimize adverse impacts and avoid deterioration of quality of life or property values in the immediate neighborhood. So that was their response to criteria number one. And what staff indicated on this one is that the, the immediate neighborhood could be adversely affected with no other uses in the general area with the proposed height, and, and that, that criteria kind of goes in sync with the first two conditional use criteria that we're looking at. Um, and what, what we felt was that, yeah, if you look at that area, if you've been in that area, the city driven it, um, again, across the street, you have the, the Florida Villas Mobile Home Park, you have one-story commercial to the, to the north. Um, and then, really going south, all the way into town, it's all undeveloped on both sides of the street, so you don't really have a lot out there, other than, uh, as you get close to Cossack Road, you got another mobile home park on the east side there. So we also talk about that, in that, back to that first condition there, that the proposed height would establish a precedent, so it'd be a new precedent that would be established out there in that general area. And then I talk a little bit about the visioning, which is gonna be, uh, part of a discussion that we have, uh, tonight, still a little bit later on. So there's opportunities for us to do the visioning, look at these areas that are undeveloped, when we're, how we're gonna grow, what, what it is, what it looks like, how tall it is, how dense it is, and then take into consideration also these factors that we're dealing now with as the city evolves with transportation, height, density, water, drainage, all those issues. So a lot of those same discussions were, were talked about, uh, in that second criteria of that, the, what I wanted to point out in that one was the proposed conditional use consistent with the character of an existing land use patterns in the surrounding area. Again, there's not a lot of character out there, a lot of it's undeveloped, you got Florida Villas, talked about. You got, uh, Simpson Environmental, that's a little bit further to the south on the other side of the street. There's a little bit of a lower building in the front, and it rises up a little bit in the back. And then, uh, you know, at the Planning Commission, they brought up, uh, you know, it, it's further north, you gotta go to pass the, the, the intersection of Wire Road and three oh one to see, like, a, a three-story indoor storage facility, and then there's, you know, that little industrial node there with some silos. But really, in this general area. But really, in this general area, you know, you emphasize the existing land use patterns, and there's just not a lot of existing in the area with that four-story. There, there was a conditional use further to the south at the bottom of the hill, three and four ALF and some memory care ward. That we did recommend approval, it's at the bottom of the hill, lower than the grade of Goll Boulevard, but that hasn't gone forward. So not sure it may in the future, but it's been probably about a year that, that was looked at. The third, just real quickly, traffic parking, I think we can deal with that. Suitable drainage, access ingress and egress. There's been some preliminary work done by the applicant with DOT with a, with an access on the north end of the property that would also provide access to the Wire Ranch townhomes that are located to the east behind the subject property. The one thing that was brought up, drainage, it's in the basin of special concern, those criteria would have to be met. There were some issues brought up about drainage at the bottom of the hill, not certainly on the subject property, there, there's some flooding that has occurred kind of at the bottom of the hill to the south, of course, you've probably seen that. Screening, buffering, that, that can all be accomplished and accommodated. The requirements of the zoning, not really any issues there. Health, safety and welfare, welfare of the surrounding community. And we just kind of touched again, you know, health, safety is okay, welfare of the surrounding community, again, it's really about that new precedent that would be set up. And I, I've just, a couple more slides here, I'll finish, and then we have further discussion. As, as you all know, sort of a new process procedure when we get a conditional use, and right now, we do what's called a pre-app meeting, and we, we go forth and review the applicant's smittle, and then we share it with the city manager and also council members. We had some one-on-one meetings just to be, get, get some general ideas and information upfront and to be trans, fully transparent with the applicant when we're dealing with a, a process like this. And what I did on this slide is I, I shared some of the, the comments on the one-on-one meetings that, that, that we had. I'll just go through those quickly. I think everyone agrees that there's a strong need for quality hotels with some amenities, including a restaurant and meeting space. And I will, I will share here that the applicant did provide a, a letter, and they indicated that if the project were to go forward, that they would add a condition into the conditional use that would address the opportunity to have that restaurant and meeting space. So one, for the record, for that to be included. You know, again, we've talked about some of the compatibility concerns that were raised on the location of the project, being this, this being the, the far north fringe of the city where a lack of compatibility of, of anything of that height. The next comment, there may be some 15 or 20 feet, I think it's probably a little less than that. When I've been out there, it, it probably is more eight, 10, 12-foot. At this location, it probably varies, and we haven't shown like a survey, but there, you have the grade of Goll Boulevard or 301, and then the, the grade of property, of course, is higher. And there was concerns raised about the requested height being near the top of the hill. Again, this Purvis's property with a home, that's at the top of the hill, but the southern boundary is close to the top of the hill, and then it drops off to the, as you go north, again, as we discussed. There, there was some concerns raised over the cutting into the hill. Again, what I showed was an eight to 10-foot cut with a retaining wall. Again, that was for illustrative purposes only. Nothing's been designed or engineered, but that was looked at as an opportunity where you could get the height of the structures a little bit lower, not be as visible. And then there was comments made about the visioning that we're going to be talking about tonight, 301 corridor vision and land use strategy, initiating that, getting it in our comp plan, having some updated meetings with the public and stakeholders, and looking at these larger undeveloped lands to, to, to hold some visioning workshops. And here is the recommendation, the Site Plan Review Committee originally approved the conditional use on the height and the use, but then after some meetings with city administration, there, there was a discussion about that 301 corridor vision and land use strategy. That was the, essentially the basis for that original recommendation, but again, that hasn't been codified yet. We're in the process of updating the comp plan, then we'll follow up with meetings and then codify that North 301 corridor vision as a county and Dade City and Zephyr Hills all collectively update the, their comprehensive plans. And we took it to the planning commission, and the planning commission did recommend approval of the conditional use. So with that, that's the presentation on the conditional use.
Yeah, and, and so the next couple items, actually, everything all ties together. And so if we ask some questions, that may be per, per into the next two items too, which is okay. Okay, but that's fine.
So the conditional use is only about the height of the, the building?
Height of the building and the actual use of a hotel.
Oh, hotel and a R4.
Well, hotel and the C1 neighborhood commercial requires a conditional use as well.
Where's the C1 come in?
Well, the requested zoning is C1, that's neighborhood commercial.
Okay, so this will, this will constitute a rezoning and then a constitutional use?
Yeah, this was part of that land use petition, which we haven't gotten to yet. Yeah.
And will the rezoning come?
Well, that's the next item.
That's why I was saying, everything kind of ties together, so ask your questions. I think you go ahead and, go ahead and ask them now, I would say, even on, if it ties in. Go ahead.
Well, I mean, do you want to, do you want to give the other report, and then we ask the questions, because, I mean, what do you think, Mr. President?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'm sorry, I was having a conversation with Matt.
Some of the questions are going to cross over anyway, so I don't know. So I mean, if you-
It's just a planning report, so we can discuss them both at, at the same time. Just if you take comments from the audience, you know, take them together, and same with now and the applicant who's online.
So just run through the-
Yeah, just do it all together, because they run together. Really, we should reverse the order for the, obviously, for the city council meeting, but the conditional use is the main part of the-
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's why we started with that, but yeah, we certainly would do that if this moves forward, yeah.
Well, since you're, it's still in the planning director report, just, let's just go ahead and look at the future land use rezoning thing. We all understand how that works, so.
We'll ask her a question.
Yeah, and then we can-
And then one point I want to bring out, in your packets, you had a letter, we had discussions with, with the applicant about not changing the future land use from RU, residential urban, which it is right now, to mixed use. That would be a typical general future land use classification for a hotel, but under the RU current, it, it, it can be considered, you know, C1 can be considered under the RU. So really, all we'd have to do is do the conditional use and deal with the zoning. And I got a letter from the, the applicant's representative where we talked about that and confirmed that.
Not at all.
Resone, but not the future land use. So here's just showing the, the future land use map amendment, which again, we wouldn't have to do under the current RU. We'd be okay, so we won't spend a lot of time on that. Here's the, the existing zoning, which is R4, that's multifamily residential, which allows higher density residential, again, up to 14 units per acre. And on the right, you see the neighborhood commercial, which again, requires a conditional use for consideration of a hotel. And here's just the analysis, I'll skip over the future land use and just jump to the, the zoning, where we talk about the existing, what it accommodates, the maximum density. Neighborhood commercial, we've talked about, surrounding uses, we've got a hotel in the north, mobile homes to the west, undeveloped land to the south and east with Wire Ranch townhomes, we talked about that. Here's the North 301 vision and land use strategy. You can see the ZM there, kind of on, right past the ZV, the Zephyr Valley. And that, again, is the preliminary North 301 corridor vision land use strategy. Originally, again, we did look at this. The, the ZM does allow for consideration of lodging, and it does allow for some height, which I state in there. And then we talked about, since we haven't codified it yet, that we shouldn't use that for the basis of the justification. So again, we're updating the comprehensive plan, the city, Zephyr Hills, Dade City and Pasco County. We'll get the framework lang, language of a vision that talks about the importance of this corridor and with the idea of preserving some of the hills, not stripping it out. Right now, it's broken up into character districts to avoid like another US-19 where it's just all commercial, a lot of access points and a lot of issues that the county's dealing with. Here's that, that slide I was talking about earlier, where you can see Phyllis is right there at the 170, kind of top of the hill there. And then you can see the, the green square there, where the southern boundary is very close to that same grade and elevation, and it, it drops as you go further to the north and drops as you go further to the east, 130 feet to 165 approximately. And this slide I just put in, we had a, a number of planning commission comments, and I'll just summarize those. By the applicant, there is some discussion, discussion about the water. Now, the Wire Ranch townhomes, we did a utility service area agreement, utility services agreement for the water. So that's tied into that townhome project. Now, it was tied in with X, with an additional number of units. Originally, it was like 300 and some, but now they've dropped it by about 100, so there'll be some extra capacity for the water based on that. Utilities director has indicated that feels like we got the water to serve us if this were to go through. Yeah, it's been a lengthy time processing the petitions. We had two rent, two series of renderings provided by the applicant, that, that took some time, and then going through the meetings that we talked about one-on-one, and it got us up to where we're at today. Yeah, some of this, we've already talked about, the height, eight-to-foot, 10-foot retaining walls, drainage basins. The neighbor, the neighboring property owners, that was Phyllis Purvis. I believe we had a couple property owners that expressed their opinions about wanting to see the, the property along 301 be zoned commercial for commercial uses. We had some discussions about that, and the next item that we're going to have later tonight is going to, we're going to talk about the visioning that's coming up and see how folks feel about when, where, how we're going to grow, what it is and all that. Yeah, confirmed her property was at the top of the hill, we talked about that. Well, there, there was discussion also about the timeliness of the 301 corridor, and yeah, it's taken some time, but every, all three governmental entities agreed, we got to get the framework of language into the comprehensive plan before we can codify it. That's typically the way the process works, and yeah, now we're at a point where all three entities are doing that, so we're going to get that done. We had some representatives from SVB and Skydive City, they both represent the business interests, and they all wanted to see quality hotels with restaurants, meeting spaces, and not necessarily where they are, but they feel like there, there's a strong need for, for that, their community to, to serve both those industries. Again, strong need for quality hotels, the general comments, the drainage concern. There was a comment brought up about Dade City Hampton Inn with some issues that they were having with the operations and, you know, hilltop preservation was a concern, we brought that up already. Compatibility with the development trends, we've talked about that, that was discussed by the commission. Discussion of alternate sites closer in the town that could support users like Skydive and SVB, that was brought up. And the height and visual impacts, some on the planning commission were okay with that, and felt like with stronger landscape buffers, that could be mitigated, so. I believe that's the, that was the, if I'll leave that up there in case there's any questions about the comments, but that's the conditional use and the rezoning that we're looking at right now.
Um, just real quick, on the next slide, was staff, staff recommendation on this particular item? I started to read it, but I didn't-
Yeah, that was both for the conditional use in the, and for the zoning.
Oh, that was, they were saying-
There was a recommendation for denial by staff, the same thing for planning commission, they recommended approval.
All right.
Staff's recommendation, again, really leaned towards the compatibility on the zoning and the conditional use for the existing development trends, didn't feel like I met those first two criteria, and that was the basis for the recommendation.
Okay, you can continue on the question then.
Todd, some of my concerns were the compatibility of the development, doesn't really, there's nothing in that general area that's even close to that. I'm also concerned about cutting down that hill. The location of the hotels being so far north into the city, I believe we do have other commercial properties that might be more appropriate for that. And four-story sets a precedent out there, as you and I had talked about earlier in the week. It sets a precedent, visioning is going to happen soon, where we're going to be looking at that whole area, so. And also, I have concerns about the south end being the lower part of that possibly getting flooded from some of that development.
Well, on that, the flooding, I don't believe would be a concern again, we're, we're near the top of the hill on the southern end of this property, as I showed on that topography map. Oh, the, the concern of drainage in the bottom of the hill.
Yes, exactly.
Sorry.
Yes.
I understand what you're saying.
Sorry.
Yep, understood.
Almost anything you build up there could-
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Can I have a few minutes? Okay. So I usually don't do that before people. I think Councilman Proctor hit on all of my concerns, and my concerns, I've been very vocal about my concerns. A, number one, I just don't understand why we would even consider four stories on the tallest part of our community, the highest point of our city. Cutting into the mountain is not something that I feel comfortable with. I understand that they were talking to cut it down to make it not as visual. I think when we look at these pictures, we're not really seeing the true what's going to be cut out. I'm concerned about that. As you know, the, the elevation, you know, that, that will impact the, the area. We know on the other side with cut, you know, when that trotter's passing, trotter's crossing, we've had, you know, the flooding on that side, I'm concerned once we start cutting into this about that. And then we've had a lot of the flooding that has come down on Wire Road, the houses right to the south of, north, south, east of this area with, with the storm that we had, we had properties flooded down there, all of, all of, across Wire Road. I just want to make sure we're being cognizant of, of how that water's going to flow is going to change for sure. And I just, when I look at this and the opposite side of the street is R1, okay, or AR on the opposite side of 301, are we setting a precedence by putting a four-story? And, and yes, we are. You're going to have every other person come in here asking for, for that. And it's something that we've talked a lot about at this, at council, I've heard it for a number of years. So that's my, those are my concerns that I have. I'm not against neighborhood commercial, I just feel strongly that four stories, this is not the best place for this four, four-story, four-story building. I just feel strongly that four stories, this is not the best place for this four-story building.
Jump in real quick, the flooding, and I just have to, I feel like I have to say this. The Zephyrocks Court flooding that occurred, and I think it was 98, Wire Road was actually underwater. So the flooding was not as bad during this event. It was everywhere else, but it was not as bad. I know the people that lived there, it was horrible to them.
Yes.
But previous flooding was worse than it currently is. So I.
I understand.
I'll leave my comment at that.
I understand. I just understand that anytime we're changing, you know, and the engineer did say that he felt like he could control the water onto this property. He felt strongly that he could control the water onto this property. And I appreciated him doing that. But with that basin, we know it's a basin of concern over there.
Yeah, I'm not trying to minimize the concern.
Yes, I just want to make sure.
That statement.
Yep, that's okay.
Certain reasons.
Those are, those are just my strong thoughts. And I echo what Councilman Proctor, I think those were your same concerns.
That's former Wilson.
I think that, well, first I want to start by saying that it's hard for us to make decisions like this. We have to always, we have to always think about what is best for the community. And I think that, you know, the compatibility issue for me is probably the biggest one. And that is because this has already been zoned R4. So with R4, they could do two-story townhomes and wouldn't have to come to us. In addition, if you look at what's all around them is higher density, you know, mobile home parks and things like that. So the continuation of a residential use in that location is probably the most compatible. And even if we talk about things like the drainage, you know, retention ponds really should be on the east and the north side because the water would be flowing down in that location. And then when I look at these renderings, they're beautiful renderings as it relates to the appearance of the building. But I think I was very clear with you, Mr. Vanderburg, that I wanted to see actual, like an actual rendering that represents accurately what the existing topographical conditions are. So for example, in these renderings by Harvard Jolly, they did a beautiful job on the building. But the roadway looks like a frontage road, looks like an approach to, you know. And that's not what we have here. What we have is people driving 55 miles an hour. And, you know, in coming, coming on this building that is going to rise out of the ground essentially, you know, four stories, even if the first story is kind of concealed. As opposed to the, the listed living facility that we evaluated some years ago that was lower down. So you were not seeing, you know, the very top of the hill wasn't being cut into. And also, they, the way they designed it so that the buildings were staggered. So the two-story buildings were in the front, and then the three-story buildings were in the back so that it was graduated from the street so that you didn't see this, you know, four-story wall coming as you drove up to the top of the hill. The other thing I'm a little concerned about is, you know, we have to think about economics to a certain extent. These developers are experts in this. Mr. Wannaker is a very good development partner for the city, I think. But I would wonder for us, is this really the right location? How many hotels can our community really sustain? And if they're going to sustain a hotel, a higher-end hotel, just think about it. We have plenty of other motels in the area. But I look at a place like Hampton Inn in Dade City, which I think struggles with keeping, you know, its occupancy at 100%. And then I would ask, you know, does Quality Inn and some of the other hotels in our area have to consider our existing businesses as well? Lastly, the location of a hotel might be better served if we look at where the demand is coming from. So if Sarah Vanderberg Tennis Center and Skydive City are creating this demand, wouldn't it be better if these hotels were located, for example, behind, you know, on the east side of Chick-fil-A? Or the, you know, closer to Sarah Vanderberg out on Island Boulevard, for example? Those locations would be superior to this location essentially in the middle of nowhere, where someone has to get in their car to go to a restaurant. And that's kind of contradicting what our idea is. And that is to kind of create nodes of neighborhoods and uses so that people don't have to get in their car if they don't want to. And so that's the, that's the end of my comments. And for those reasons, I could not be in support of this proposal.
And I just wanted to touch bases about the Quality Inn and the other hotel we have right there. They're usually very full. We do need a hotel. We need a high-end hotel. I'm not against high-end hotel. I'm just totally echo what you're saying, that it's got to be in the right area in order for it to be able to be viable in our community.
Todd, I have a question. So the property on 301, from this piece of property all the way to the south to Kosick Road is city except for those two trailer parks that are already there, existing on the east side. Those are county, and the rest of it's city. Now, on the west side of the road, I know Simpson Environmental's county. I believe that trailer park right to the north of that is county. What about the land right on 301 going south to Kosick Road there?
Annex in the city, but they still retain the county's future land use and zoning. When the applicant brought that in, I don't know if you all remember, but we were just starting the North 301 corridor vision land use strategy. And they said, well, we're not, we really don't know what we're going to do with the property. So the option is it can remain county, future land use and zoning. And that's what they did. So there's been a couple hits here and there about folks looking at it. And then once someone decides, then we would readdress that at that time, the future land use and zoning for the city on that property just south of Phelps.
All the way to, all the way to Kosick?
Correct, yeah. The corner, we have some development right now that's being looked at, at the northwest corner of Kosick and 301. There's a couple of parcels that our staff is reviewing.
At city?
In the city.
Okay.
That's correct. Then you got a stretch that's out, and then it comes back into the city, the one we were just talking about.
Right. And I think, and I know the 301 corridor visioning plan that we had, and we've discussed it several years ago. And everybody's updating the comp plans right now. So if we, let's just say that we decided we wanted to do something on both sides of 301 there. Could we move forward with our own vision of what we would like things to be there? If we were just, you know, going to move forward on something because, and then make it tie into the 301 corridor? In other words, the whole idea behind it was not to make it look like Highway 19 over on the west side of the county. And I get that, and that's where we should be. And we do have some residential there already. What I'm trying to get at is, I don't want to see a bunch of high-density residential.
Well, and you'll see in my next presentation, we're going to talk about that. I think I'll be answering your question.
And I think on that north side of town is already kind of our commercial district to begin with.
Yes, it's a commercial node, a large retail node.
And I think we need to, we need to get ahead of, what do we want to do from that point up to the top of the hill? Because that is the end of the property, of the city limits there. What is our vision for that? I think we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. I will say that I'm not opposed. I think the largest city in Pasco County probably needs, we need a right product hotel, though. We don't just need a hotel, we need a right product. And I think, I'm not totally opposed to that area if we make everything else work within it. But I think we're sort of a little bit, a little bit ahead of our skis here on what we're trying to do. Because, you know, and in the four-story, of course, you know, I've been voting against the four-story apartments and things like that. But I see a hotel, this four-story is a totally different product. So and I realize there are some other places that potentially this product should go. But I mean, we're looking at this right now. So I think our biggest thing is, you know, what do we want to do with the rest of the property that's there that's still available? What do we want that to be? And like I said, I'm going to be opposed to any kind of high-density residential, that's for sure. Because that's our biggest problem right now with traffic, water, and all the other things. And, you know, so, I mean, that's kind of where I sit on it.
So number one, we have to remember that anything that, I mean, when it's zoned, they can do anything that's permitted in that zoning district. So we have no say. So right now, if they wanted to build apartments there, they could.
Two-story.
Two-story, okay. Or townhomes.
Or townhomes, yeah.
Now, traditionally, when you have a busy highway, you know, you usually do have some commercial or multifamily that buffer what's behind it.
Yes.
You could say, you know, what we have, like where Walmart and all that is. And then on the opposite side of Green Slope, it's all residential. So that kind of atmosphere. There's a lot of property out there that's still AR. It's not going to stay AR. There's no AR in this area right anymore. So, you know, we have to be aware of either it's going to be developed in the county or it's going to be annexed in. So that's why the visioning, I think, is very important to look at. We have to square it off and even think what might happen in, to the west side of 301 if that annex is in. I'm not for cutting hills down. We did that on the west side, I mean, where Hobby Lobby is. I mean, it used to be up like this, and now you go down like this. So I don't know how we let that happen. So I think in some regards, we need to learn from past development issues that we did that we probably shouldn't have. You know, this whole area, I mean, we have to look and see, the other side of it is property rights. I mean, we can't just say you can't develop your property. We have to look at what is compatible and how we can work with everybody. So I think there's a lot of issues here, more than just this eight acres that we have to look at.
That's why we got the.
The other side of it is, I don't know how long you can deny somebody an answer, really, how they want to use their property. We don't have to rezone it, that's for sure.
Right.
But.
We don't have to approve four stories.
And we, yeah, now that the conditional use is in place, we don't have to approve the four stories. So.
Yep.
But. Save some of it.
Well, let me, at this point, let's see if there's anybody from the audience that would like to speak to this. And remember, you have three minutes to make your comments. So kind of get to the point and state your name and address when you come up to speak.
Applicant's representative.
Yes. And so, Ricardo, we haven't even signed up?
Yes, I have Phyllis Purvis, who signed up to speak to both items, 4.1 and 4.2.
Okay. And you can combine both things together in your comments.
Phyllis Purvis. Sure. 8618 Gull Boulevard, Zephyr Hills, Florida. I live right next to that property. My grandparents used to own all that property. It was 75 acres, the pond and all that stuff. Okay, here's the bottom line. You guys had this corridor study that I've been told for 10 years. Then I find out a couple of weeks ago, was never officially adopted or finalized. I've been told, and I worked for Caldwell Banker in town and have for a very long time, I cannot sell my land, which is next to it, which is five acres and five acres and five acres. So my father saved a strip. He actually was Russell Purvis. He got us annexed into the city, which was supposed to be something positive, which has turned into something extremely negative. I cannot sell my land for the last 10 years because it's zoned R4. Because you don't want four stories on a hill. Okay, I got it. Then you got me miszoned. It's commercial all day, every day. Every single time that I have tried to sell that property, including the one that's in question right now, the people come to us, from wherever they be, the powers that be, they come and they say, "Look, we really love all this, Phyllis, but can we put commercial on the front?" There's 40,000 to 50,000 cars a day. My front yard faces Wilton Simpson. It's a warehouse. I mean, 5:30 in the morning, there's 20 truck lights shining in my bedroom window. It is commercial. You can't wait 10 years. They've got, that RU or rural urban, that's Lake Pasadena. I'm not Lake Pasadena. This one ain't Lake Pasadena. It's coming. And because, and I say this as kindly as I can, you know, South Zephyr Hills got all the attention, and we've been ignored. And we've been ignored and ignored and ignored. But it is coming, and the agricultural is gone. I mean, it's just not, nobody, you can't be there anymore at that location. If you don't want four stories, then tell them to make it three stories. Tell them to tier it. It's really pretty up there on the hill. Just, you know, it can have this great vision. You do need a hotel. And, you know, it's just surrounded by, there's commercial, yeah, okay, so there's a trailer park. But it's on a highway, long story short. I mean, so I don't even, and I don't know how you guys stay up and do this in the evening because I'm like, I applaud you for that. But I'll answer any questions you have. But I'm the neighbor, I'm in favor of it. I am also going to be requesting the same thing, commercial zoning, because I can't sell my land. I'm the last of the Mohicans up there. My whole family's gone. I want to, I want to stay, but I don't want to be there anymore on that hill all by myself. And they're going to develop all around me. They're going to put 210 cows in my backyard. You think they're not going to be in my yard? Because when they dig Dr. Horton, guess what? We own that pond. They're in the pond every night fishing. And they finally, and that's why the cows were out all the time. The cows were always in the subdivision or on the highway because the people just do whatever they want to do. I don't want to live there anymore, and it's going to have to be developed. And you guys have to pay attention to it and do something with it. I don't think the, I think there's a need for a hotel, and I don't think it's going to be anything hideous. And I think that you would have control over that. I think that you could say, okay, well, we would like this, but, you know, we want a restaurant. But we want conference rooms. But we want it three. But we want it tiered. I just think that if you kind of come to an understanding, the first off, but it is commercial right across the street from me. It's so bizarre that you tell us we can't have commercial when it's on the opposite side of the street. It just happens to be the county, and we're the city, and that's bizarre. So that's really all I have to say.
All right, well, thank you. And that's why I brought up too, because the 301 vision, corridor vision hasn't been codified. And like you said, you're talking about the three entities that are all going through our comp plans right now. But that's why I asked the question. Can we still get ahead of things and do what we envision should be there? And we already had kind of like the neighborhood character things already sort of set up. That was just an idea, just a concept that wasn't set in stone. But, I mean, we can, as you're saying, kind of like, what do we want there? And let's make the product the way we want it built and whether it involves.
And for instance, for mine, for my parcels that neighbor it, I don't want to put four stories, but that's been my zoning the whole time that I tried to sell it, was four stories. So the developers come and they're like, oh, you're R4. Okay, I can go 20 units per acre, and I can go four stories high. And I go to Todd, and no, you can't. But it's miszoned, in my opinion. I haven't been able to sell it. So, you know, to me, to do commercial on my property or theirs, number one, if I did commercial on mine, you're going to have maybe two toilets. It's going to be two stories tops on the strip that complements it. Something is going to complement it. My land is for sale. I cannot be landlocked forever. Whatever you guys allow there, I am going to complement it somehow. And to me, it is commercial. I can't give it away as anything other than that.
Right. And honestly, it is, something is going to happen. You know, so like you said, and I've said before, the orange groves and the cows are gone. That's not, you know, the people that had that land for that purpose sold that land. So I'll go ahead, I'll let you.
Talking about C1, C2, C3, I mean.
Subject property?
For, no, for like Mrs. Purvis's property. What kind of zoning, commercial would we put in there? I mean, you're talking about changing this to C1.
He said C1.
So. That's neighborhood commercial that allows more of your, not your intense commercial use, like gas station, convenience stores, more neighborhood that meet the needs of the commercial retail needs of the neighborhoods. Again, yeah, we, the visioning, the visioning is going to determine how we feel about these larger undeveloped areas, whether it's north in the town, south in the town. We've talked about the northeast area town. Yeah, that, we'll be talking about that here shortly, about what this visioning exercise is going to look like and the process we're going to go through with the community. The Purvis can come to that, planning commission, city council, the public, and we're going to figure that out.
You know, you see what the county's been doing on the south end, it's subdivisions from, you know, well, the connection to 399 and 301, all the way down right on 301, right on. 301, right on Chancy, right on 39. So we should, and then Two Rivers. So we don't want that for sure. So, I mean.
I think, I think that's an important question. And I think I've asked, I've asked, I know I've asked Todd this more than once. I think I've asked all the council members. If not this product, what product? And that, again, I know Todd has mentioned it multiple times. Item three, under his items tonight, is a visioning session. And that's what we have to talk about, is if not this product, what is that product? And that's what Ms. Purvis is asking as well.
This corridor study, okay, so my father died 11 years ago. Okay, I have been dealing and being told for 11 years that you can't build there, Phyllis, because of the Highway 301 corridor study. That 10 years, 10 years I've been trying to sell my land, 10 years. And now to say that you're finally going to start looking again? How long is that going to take? How many years is that going to take? How long am I going to have to sit up there? Am I going to die up there surrounded by everything under the sun? Because it's not fair. It's like I'm being landlocked. You can't sit there and tell somebody that you're zoned inappropriately. If it were zoned correctly, I sell real estate.
All due respect, they could tomorrow could build townhomes there or apartments. Now, do we like that idea?
You can't give it away. Nobody wants to be on a highway. There's like right up my front door. You throw a stone and you're, you got a bus stop and you got 50,000 cars a day. Nobody wants that frontage for that. Now.
But I look at, at a place like Cross Creek, for example, you go to New Tampa, and what happens is they do, they do the retention in the front. They do land, buffer landscaping. You drive a short way into the development. There's another way out of the development. So it's not all, it's not one way in and one way out. And then those single-family homes are beautifully developed there.
I am telling you, I personally, I personally own 4.8 acres. That's what I personally own. I don't own 15. My uncle owns another four, and my uncle owns another four. I can't control them. My uncle's 87. He could pass away. Everybody's going to change their mindset at that point. I don't even know what's going to happen. What I'm telling you is I personally have 4.8 acres. What do you want me to do with it?
You can't develop that in that way.
And you, have you asked to rezonate? Have you come in and asked?
No, I have not, because I'm waiting for this, because I'm a local person. I don't have deep pockets like the world, you know. So I'm waiting to see if this transitions, whatever transition. What I'm trying to say is it's going to transition. It is transitioning. And you guys kind of missed the boat a little bit.
Want us to get off the pot.
Yeah. And, and Ms. Purvis, I, and I, I do believe that this council feels strongly about getting that done. Not in 10 years, not in five years. It's going to be high on our priorities in this next few months to really have that visioning.
I think we need to do.
But that, and that's why I was saying, asking, can we still do what we want to do on those properties? If we decide that we want to rezone them or whatever it is we want to do, we don't have to necessarily wait for that to be codified.
Do our own visioning and it, you know, and we need to vision the whole city, but we, we need to maybe have sections that we will look at in this process that we can move quick, more quickly.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Applicant.
Okay, the applicants.
Did Billy want?
I'll, I'll circle back. I'll wait. You, you'll wait?
Yeah.
Okay. David, would you like to add anything or just?
Good evening. Yeah, I'm, I'm sitting here sweating while I'm hearing these conversations. Guys, well, thanks for giving me the chance to talk. I have to remind, I don't know if the board is remembering, I was asked seven or eight years ago to wait for the vision plan to be in place. At that stage, it was going to take about six months. I think it was around 2016 or 2017. Since, Todd, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Is that right? Around, that's when this vision plan started?
It seems to me.
The 301.
It was, yeah, it's been about.
Yeah, right. And I was told all along, I'm sorry, I, I was told all along to follow the vision until about two months ago. It's hard to accept, guys. And by the way, R4, am I correct? It's not R4, it's not 14 units breaker? Wasn't it increased to 20 units breaker to allow these certain properties to be developed at a higher density? And that wasn't a long time ago, maybe four years ago? Because I heard 14 per acre.
Well, it, it had, it had been increased, I don't, and I can't give you the exact dates. Maybe Todd could do that. But it had been increased to 20, but it has since been reduced back to the 14 that we used to have.
When was, I, I'm not even aware of that. Okay, interesting.
That was done about.
That's sort of in the last year or so.
About a year ago.
Okay. Regardless, about, wow, it seems a long time, maybe a year and a half ago, I had to fork out 340, 350 units of water and sewer capacity, 50% of the price, to reserve it, anticipating 340 units. If that was never to be anticipated, I would have never put out that $700, $650,000. But I've really been depending on the direction of the board, and I say the board, I'm talking staff, the planning staff, to give me the direction to follow through on these projects that I work on. So it is disappointing to hear which, a long time ago, I'm going to say back, whenever the site plan and review committee meeting was, there was a recommendation for approval. I mean, I, tell me if I'm wrong on that too. But there was an absolute recommendation for approval. Only recently, and I say recently, within the last two or two months, three months, when I got a phone call from Todd and Billy Poe, was they're like, danger, danger. It's called being transparent. But it was to me more saying, hey, guys, I'm reversing what we recommended. That's what I felt like. This is like a reversal of a decision. And I know no decision is formal until there's an actual vote, public hearing, appeal period. I understand, but I'm following the recommendations of your staff for a very long time. And to be told that now this vision doesn't work because it's, you know, across the street from residential. Can we define the street as a four-lane divided state highway that we front on? This isn't wire road that we know floods out. I used to own the Valley Oaks Golf Course. I'm very familiar with the flooding back there. And I did not develop that area because of the flooding. So I am familiar. But to say it's across the road from your residential, I mean, a state divided four-lane highway. I heard some comments tonight about, you know, we're worried about 55 mile an hour or larger speed limits to, you know, go up and, you know, jam on the brakes basically to, and I don't mean to, you know, put words in someone's mouth, but it sounded like that, to get into this development. You know, there's a state highway FDOT permit being issued, which discusses northbound, southbound vehicular traffic and widening and, and improvements that are to be done for this development, and not just development, but the approved townhouse project right, right behind, which is being built by Breitland Homes shortly. So anyway, guys, you know, we've known each other since 1998 when I've done my first project. There's been 18 of them. I always listened to your advice in the past. When there was discussions about other projects, one was called Avoca Court comes to my mind. Dave, don't do it. Don't put an apartment there. I listened to you, changed the plan, took two and a half years extra. I've always done everything you guys have recommended and followed. You know, I'm doing the same thing here right now, but now I'm being told we're going to re-envision the area? Guys, I didn't envision this, this envision was seven years ago, right? It sounds like we want to start over and look again at this property. I'll be dead by the time this thing gets looked at. I joined, you know, Ms. Purvis in the same comments. You know, we, this is a, a need. I, I heard another comment earlier about, we don't know about the amount of housing, I'm sorry, hotels that are needed for this area, rooms. You're worried about oversaturating the market. My minor at Boston University was in hospitality administration. All right. I did an internship with the Hyatt Regency Company for two years while in college and outside of college. I understand what is needed in a way of, you know, density. A 20,000 home community needs approximately 2,500 quality hotel rooms, not even close to that number. And I can tell you, a two-story building might get you a Motel 6 or a Red Roof Inn, and I have nothing against those products. I used to manage one, you know, back in college, you know. But this is going to be a product that you're going to be extremely proud of. A four-story, up to four-story, by the way, it's 45 feet. It's not 60 feet in height. It's 45 feet. Okay. So I don't know why we're talking about 60 feet all the time, if that makes any difference. 12 feet first story, 11 feet for each additional story, roughly 45 feet, maybe give or take a, a foot or two. But anyway, why we're talking about a quality hotel, that's the only thing I want to do in this area, is to bring in a product that will have a restaurant in each hotel, will have a bar, will have catering facilities or banquet facilities. So you can have a nice wedding facility in the city of Zephyr Hills. You know, the, I, there's no place to go. When you have guests over the Christmas holidays, other than staying in your home, where are they going to go? They're going to go spend their money outside in Land O' Lakes, Lake Wales, I'm sorry, Lake, excuse me, Land O' Lakes, Wesley Chapel, or Dade City to the north. They're not staying in your city. They're not. You know, it's unfortunate. The money's not going there. I saw the tennis center getting built. What a tremendous, you know, property that we donated and, and loved and were proud of. And I know you all are as well. But it's suffering. And it's suffering because they can't host tournaments. They don't, you guys don't have the ability to house the people to host those facilities. I want to resolve that problem. I can bring up to 240, 260 hotel rooms, banquet facilities, restaurants, excuse me, food and beverage license, beverage license, I was thinking about alcoholic beverage license. I want to build something you're going to be proud of. And guys, there's no place downtown to build this. There's no place that's available with five acres. I wish there was. I heard another comment earlier about, you know, maybe it was closer to, you didn't say Pretty Pond Road, but I guess that's what you were saying. And guess what? Three or four years ago, and Todd can be my witness, I asked if Pretty Pond could be the location for some hotels. And at the time, I was told it's kind of off the beaten path. And maybe, you know, Todd was right. But guys, this is a great location for it. We're not hurting anybody. To the north county road, I guess it's a, a lower rate motel or multifamily type of building. I'm in the west. There's more undeveloped land, which wants to be the same to the south as you've heard. And across the street, you're right, is the Mople Park plus Trotters Crossing being developed. I don't see who I'm affecting, but I do see how I'm helping the city. Guys, you need a hotel. You need a ratable. You don't need more housing right now. And I'm a housing developer telling you that. You know, you have a ratable, a taxable ratable, one that is not going to affect the traffic patterns of morning commuters to the city, evening people returning, you know. Bottom line is, guys, please don't start envisioning this property now. This was supposed to have been envisioned already. And I did what I was told to do. Follow the vision. So, and that's all I can say. I don't know whether Leonard has anything to add. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your comments on that, David. And, and I'm, in my mind, I'm not thinking visioning that's going to take a long time either. It's kind of like, what do we want to do there? I mean, we can make that decision fairly quick. I don't think we need to have a long drawn out process on it. It's just a matter of, and for me, that north end of town is already kind of like our commercial area to begin with. And so I'm, I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, commercial there on up or whatever. And then you've got some residential towards the backside, like we said. I mean, that's just my thoughts on it.
That's me back there.
Typically, you build a lot of houses and then the commercial, they go in cycles. So, you know, we don't need more residential right now. Lord knows. And, you know, David, part of the issues, but this is Steve Spina. Part of the issue has been, you know, the council's changed in the last year and a half. We had a moratorium. We have issues with our water use permit, as you know. We have traffic issues. So we're trying to juggle a lot of things in here and, and provide planning and development that won't adversely impact issues we're already dealing with. So that's, I think, a lot of, you know, what's driving some of this. It's, and I, I don't, I think we need a visioning session, but I'm thinking we need a, you know, maybe a day-long or a morning session where we look at things and talk. I'm not talking about a six-week or longer exercise. I, I think we need to, you know, do something, you know, have a, come out with some ideas and, and then move on. So.
Yeah. So the, the visioning plan or the 301 vision plan is complete. So it's a, hard document sitting on a shelf that we can review. If council agrees with it, we can move forward with the approval of it. The issue is, is that it was done in conjunction with the city, Zephyr Hills, Pasco, Dade City, but it was never officially adopted.
Yes, I heard.
Right. And that's what I'm saying, is that we can look at it, we can look at it quickly and say, hey, here it is. We agree with it. Move it forward. Or.
Right. Because it said, Dade City is moving further south and they're doing what, they're doing it the way they want to do it. So.
Correct.
We wouldn't, you know.
Yes. I don't think this has to be a long, I say that to say this doesn't have to be a long drawn out process to approve a vision. If, you know, it's there.
In particular, this, this particular property, I think we owe it to this applicant to make a decision and move forward.
Right.
And if we have any specific concerns, that we address those after we have this, this visioning discussion and that the, that, you know, the, the planning commission can get behind, our staff can get behind and the, and the, and the rest of council can support.
Well, honestly, weren't we planning a joint with the planning commission meeting for January? Weren't we going to do that anyways?
The next item on there is.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So, and that was.
Mr. Burgess?
Well.
We do accept the report.
We can't even get.
Okay.
Who? Okay. Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Lynn Johnson, the representative. Thank you very much. Just a couple of things, because I, I've spent some time with the planning commission just a few weeks ago. And, and really, all of these issues were discussed at the time. One, Todd has, has pointed out too, which we, we have agreed, I think, I think we all agree that low-end hotels are not what the city most needs at this moment. It needs a high-end or higher-end amenitized hotel. We have agreed that that could be a condition of an approval, that it contain a restaurant and conference space within the hotel or hotels to address what everybody who has spoken tonight recognizes is a significant need in the town. The, the other item is, you know, and, and I, I hear and, and, and I understand what Billy's saying too, but the, the city has been operating on a vision for this area since 2017. When, when we came in, which now has been roughly a year ago with this application, that, that vision is what we were appointed to. We, we have, and I, and I believe Todd will verify this, we have designed, redesigned, you know, every time staff came to us to say, you know, it would be a little better project if you could do X. X got done. You know, this, this is a, a well-thought-out, a well-thought-out project, or at least concept of a project. It's the right, it, it sits on a US, a four-lane divided US highway, which, you know, how, how it's not compatible, it, it, it's hard to say it's not compatible with the surrounding because there's nothing really surrounding it. We are in the property to the east with the townhouse project, which has had, as, as the mayor pointed out, we discussed this at the planning commission, there, there has been significant work done on the drainage for this site and the townhouse site, which will be sort of a joint, a joint drainage. And it really has to be the way the, the land slopes, it'll, it'll run through an area and then be retained on a portion of the, of the townhome site. But it, it's not willy-nilly. It's not, let's slap something together. It's been engineered, re-engineered, and, and well-thought-out. We've been at it, as I said, specifically on this site. We've been at it, as I said, specifically on this site and on this project for approximately a year. And, you know, the idea of visioning and, you know, then visioning becomes, well, let's do comp plan revisions. You know, I just, I find it hard to believe that that's gonna happen in the next month to two to three. It, I mean, it just, it takes time. If you're getting additional input and so forth, then this seems to me, and again, the planning commission recommended approval, this seems to me like the right place and the right project, and it fits the needs of the city. And it clearly, this seems to me, clearly, this is going to be a commercial area. It's just an extension of the commercial that you've got developing through that whole area already. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
With the new program that we have at the planning department, are we able to do a topography map so, you know, when we come to the visioning, we could see what this is actually going to look like with the cut of the hill and everything else? Is that possible with the new program that you have?
Yeah, I mean, again, we have a topography map in there, and Cody Bogart, the engineer, provided the, oh, we had the Harvard Jolly Renderings, and then the profile cross-section where you show the existing proposed grades and at least one idea where you'd have some cut. But yes, to answer your question, part of our Esri Arc Urban project that Tommy Lee is involved with, her and I have been having some meetings with Esri. We provide all the future land use zoning data. We're gearing up where we've got a couple of examples that we're gonna be able to do. So, yeah, moving forward, that's the benefit of that software, where we're gonna be able to.
But we're not there yet.
Provide a lot, our own information to show grades and heights and compatibility, those types of things.
Well, I think what Councilwoman Wilkinson was, like, with an architectural background and a construction background, we can conceptualize just from a topo or a profile, but I think what you were saying is, we'd like to see something that gives the actual elevations, you know, what is, how high is that hill there? Because like you said, what we're looking at here is not reflective of what it really looks like.
That picture's not reflective of the road.
So, for those that maybe can't visualize, or it does make it easier for us too, to have a better of the elevation there. I mean, this is, this is nice, and like Steve said, the product looks nice too. And I think that's what we're really looking for is right product, right place. And one thing that hasn't been brought up, but I think has been brought up with the applicant before, is the Dairy Road Extension. Because I think no matter what we do along that three oh one and any of that property there, that has to be a part of what we're looking for, is that Dairy Road Extension.
For wireage townhomes to continue sixty-foot or right-of-way norths. So that's shown on the construction plans for the project, yeah.
Yeah. And then the other thing is, I just want some clarification, because yes, David, you, or Mr. Warner, we keep going sixty-five, forty-five, and even the engineer that night, we kept going back and forth and not a clear picture. So, is the forty-five feet, is that three-story building, or is the forty-five feet?
Forty-five is the fourth.
Is the fourth, okay, is the fourth. That's, that was one of the.
And if we could see that, you know, like Councilwoman Wilkinson said, that forty-five-foot product with the actual
Right.
topography out there, it would help. It might, it might even, some people might even look at it and say, hey, you know what? That's not as bad as I thought it was gonna be.
That's right. Like, for example, we have that image. I mean, it's very common in our office, we'll take photographs from the car, and, you know, and you're doing these photographs, and then you superimpose the mass, and that's the thing that our software does now, that you superimpose the proposed mass on the property at the proposed location. You might be surprised that you can't see thirty percent of it from, you know, from the car when you're in, you know, when you're driving down the road. But those are the kinds of things that we can't get a good picture of, because we have this conceptual artistic rendering of focused on the building, and then it's representing this road as flat and with no turn lanes that looks like a frontage road, and it's not, and it's a four-lane, you know, US highway going, you know, with people driving, you know, fifty-five miles an hour. So that, those are only, you know, my only, and there's no signage, no pylon signage represented. And I know it's early in the process, but again, it's conceptual renderings that are accurate as it relates to the existing topography and what you're really gonna see when you're there. And maybe the building gets slid back, you know, a parking space or twenty feet, and what kind of difference that makes from a visual impact to the top of the hill.
I have, I have two, one of the notes I wrote when we were talking about this and you were presenting the slides, Todd, was, and this is Steve again, you talked about screening, and I just wondered, I was wondering, what kind of screening is visible for a four-story building?
Yeah, I mean, you saw the, on the, I guess, the northern part of the property, there's existing trees. Again, we haven't gotten into any site planning. I don't know if the engineer has looked at that comprehensively yet at this point. Obviously, you try to leave the existing trees, because there are some there if you live by the site. And then the screening can be a combination of berms, walls, landscaping, increased landscaping, a lot of different ways. And then, like you brought up, Jody, probably the setback from the property boundary line, you know, setting the building back. I think that other project that we did had some nice, it was like a drive-by video that showed, and we transitioned the height from four to three-story, the smaller buildings towards the front, taller buildings to the east. So there's different elements that could be brought into the site planning process where you could reduce or mitigate some of that visual impact of the four-story.
Yeah, I have one more question then, if I may. When was this property annexed and zoned R4, all of it? Do we know?
It was a long time ago. I don't know. You, twenty years ago?
Twenty years ago?
That sounds about right.
And it was owned R4 at the time?
Yes.
Right, just, yeah, okay. All right, thanks.
If I may, if I can address the mayor's question, we have the, we have the software to do what you're asking for. Our experience level is not to that point yet.
That's what I was asking.
So, yes, we have the software.
But we don't.
I don't want to tell you we can do it and not be able to produce it.
I got you.
So, I think we need to have a conversation with the applicant to be able to produce that so that you have that visual. We'll try, but.
The supplier should help you then, the people we bought it from. Couldn't they help you?
Right. And that's why I just asked. I didn't know how far in we had done the training and stuff. So that was just a question that I asked, because, you know, I mean, I am not a construction person. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. I'm okay with that too. But I just need to visualize what, I drive this road every day of my life, because my office is in Dade City, so I'm having.
Well, I think one thing, if the trees could remain there, because you drive by the trailer park every day. Nobody ever sees that trailer park. You don't know it's there because of those trees. So, I mean, I think there's, there's things, you know, if we can maintain them, I don't know what, you know, what would have to stay or go or whatever, but, I mean, there's options for sure.
The other question I think we just really need to answer is, is a hotel at this location
Right.
something we all can support? And that, and then, and if it is, what's gonna happen on both sides of it? And those are the kinds of things that we need to talk about during the, and not drag this out for the folks who are struggling with the answers from us.
Well, let's just kind of, let's go right to four point three. Your request is to set a date for visioning session workshop, and that is to include the planning commission, and then, of course, public.
Public, council, mayor, staff?
Yeah.
If you want, are, are we gonna jump into that? Again, there's.
That's what I'm saying. Let's go ahead and let's jump into that, because I think it's a really important part of the whole process. We're sort of talking about everything, to me, in reverse.
That's why we wanted to bring it up tonight. Exactly. Okay, so you see the plans at Zephyr Hills, our comp plan update, the year, the next steps. What we're talking about doing, I've been working with Tammy Vran, Vran, a consulting on this. We're gonna do some visual preference surveys. We're gonna look at a lot of images. I've got some slides that talks about this a little bit. We're talking about different ways to survey people. I'll show you a slide on that. We're gonna, just like the mobility plan, we're gonna create a webpage that talks about this visioning, so everyone can stay in touch with the city and what we're doing, and make sure we got good collaborative effort between the governmental folks, the public, you know, everyone. We're gonna have some workshops where we talk about this, and then, once we're all done, then we'll, yeah, we'll update the growth policies. And that's the comp plan, the policy part, but then implementation through the zoning and what we're talking about this corridor preservation plan, which we could jump into. I got the. I don't know if this is working. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we talked about the VSP, VPS stands for visual preference surveying, okay? So what is that? So what we want to try to get is the public opinion on images. What we're gonna have is a variety of different types of images that shows how, when, where, how, what we can grow, how we can develop, what it is, what it looks like, all that. So we'll have a survey that provides a lot of different ideas of how these areas could look. Community design, our different types of architectural style, how we can develop the land, tier in the land, do we keep the hilltops, streetscaping, you know, how the built environment will actually be built from an engineering standpoint, okay? And again, here's, we're just talking about the importance of what we're wanting to do the visioning for, how the land use is gonna develop, talking about transportation. Again, how does it look like? How tall is it? What's the architectural style? Do we want to get into that? Again, with that built environment and the site design, they kind of go hand-in-hand of talking about how the end product is gonna look in these larger undeveloped areas of the city, okay? So here's a lot of the types of images where we're gonna be, I won't go through all these, but you can get a pretty good idea. We're looking at this comprehensively from, you know, I'll reference that housing type. You know, where do we want the housing? What do we want it to look like? How tall do we want it to be? What's the density on it? And how do we want it to look on the property? And there's different, in different areas of the city, we might want it to look a little bit different on a side of a hill versus a flat piece of land. But, you know, you can see here, yeah, a lot of images we'll be creating for that survey that everyone will have a chance to look at, okay? Three different types of survey that we're looking at. A little phone app that you can do the survey. We'll do the old-school written forms, and we'll do an online survey, okay? And here's just an example of the rating system. So you'll have a photo, and what you go on, you go in there and you rate it. So you can see the different categories that you could rate for each of those pictures under A, B, C, and D, and the variant scale there of how you rate the image. That's how we're gonna propose to do this, okay? We want to have a mapping activity and where we're susceptible to change, where we create the vision for a lot of different areas in the city, okay? So the green areas, we'll use the green marker to mark up the plans where the, where we have great conditions. Green is go, where we don't really think that we have to have a lot of changes. That could be a park lands, could be city hall, environmentally sensitive lands, areas that we don't really feel like there'd be any change necessary, being green, okay? Yellow, that could be the outer line areas, lots and buildings that are in good condition. They might need some minor repair, and this could be in the downtown core, CRA, the form-based code, areas that probably need a little improvement, so we'd mark those in yellow. Farmlands, we don't really have much of that, so I don't think that'd be the case, okay? The orange would be lots and buildings that need major improvements. And these would be areas that we probably target for infill. And that could be new development, could be redevelopment, but the orange would dictate, again, all of us would be around a table with the markers, and we'd collectively agree what level of that project or that property or that building is in to determine the color, okay? The high susceptibility to change, that's where really the land, the buildings, everything on the property is just really inappropriate, could be non-conforming, a lot of different deteriorated, vacant. This is where we seriously want to have new development, redevelopment to occur. And again, areas of the form-based code, CRA, would probably be high candidates for that, okay? Yeah, the next one is, we want to look at some low-hanging fruit. And that would be the black marker where we have some short-term future growth in neighborhood centers. So, yeah, we want to draw a five-minute walk around residential areas. And what the goal is there, we want to have policies in our comp plan is, is to provide, within five-minute walking, some neighborhood retail opportunities, whether it's a cafe, a gathering place, some type of neighborhood residential, like we were just talking about tonight, some of those types of uses to serve the existing and the proposed developments that are in the queue, okay? And so, on these areas, on the maps, we'll put red dots for our retail centers. And that could be commercial retail, restaurants, entertainment venues. Where in the city right now, we'd like to broaden the retail out into the neighborhood areas, appropriately being neighborhood commercial. So if you're living out here, you don't always have to jump into the car. You can walk that five-minute walk we just had in the last slide to get to these retail centers. I'm going very quickly, but just want to give you an overview. And this would be for the non-residential, our office areas, and probably more for us, more of a need for continuing to look at our light industrial opportunity areas. I think we've got a pretty good handle on where those are right now, okay? And then the yellow, yeah, there may be some areas for residential. And, you know, but now with everything that's occurring, how the city's evolving, water, transportation, what's happening in the county, north and south of us, we might be a little more particular on where the residential. But let's talk about that, and where are we okay with having these new residential areas and break it down to single-family, multifamily, okay? And recreational. We talked about a new park on the north end of town. Let's have that discussion. It's been in the comp plan for past twenty years. We talked about a park in the north end of the city, while we're doing the visioning, let's talk about that, if that's truly what we want, and look at some opportunities for that while we still have some land available, okay? So that's what we're thinking and talking. I think, like Billy mentioned, I think what we were looking at timeframe was getting through the holidays and then continuing to prepare for this visioning workshops and getting all the photos together and get the survey done. We could try to get that done in January optimistically, and then have the workshops that following month, I think is probably maybe the best we could do. But we could jump on that, and then we can bring up that, the existing North Three Oh One Vision land use strategy. And if we're okay with that, we could steam ahead with that. We'd do our own comp plan update, get it in there and implement it, if that's what the community still wants to do in those areas. So that was a lot in about five minutes.
Okay, well, thank you, Todd. And I agree, and I think this, what you're talking about here, is going to be a little bit more of an ongoing process. I think when we have the meeting, the workshop, we can do, we can put an emphasis, just as you just said, on those, just a couple of properties actually, on three oh one there. Even on the west side, we can, and we do have something that we did back in 2016 or whatever that has a little bit of a, we have a little bit of a reference already. And if we can get that, what we're asking for, for a better look at what those hotels would look like on there, I think we can, we can continue on with the visioning on the whole entire city, but put a quick emphasis on, because in my opinion, we've already kind of crossed that bridge of where we're headed there anyways. I mean, it's commercial. We've got, townhome's gonna be off the road behind. We've got a potential ALF facility. So I think that's what we need to do, is kind of like, it shouldn't take us that long to figure out what we want to do, in other words, on just that particular area. I'll let anybody else come in on. I'll let anybody else come in on.
I agree with you.
Well, I agree with you, Councilman, Council President Burgess. But I don't think we should, I don't think it's fair to Mr. Wanaker to drag our feet on this, for sure. I mean, he's done, he did his due diligence by putting all that money up in front. And I can understand his concerns. So and I agree with what Council President Burgess said. We can at least take care of that. We can look at all the other stuff.
Right, but I think we've put an emphasis on this. And you know, honestly, it, this, that was done seven, eight years ago. It is our, I must say, it's our fault because as Councilman Spina said, there's a lot of things that happened in that timeframe that has kind of derailed us. So it's not, but that's a long time. Mrs. Purvis even had the same comment. So I think we can, we can look at that and, you know, we have spoken individually too with you. So you kind of know where we're off, how most of us feel.
Well, in that North 301, we did that collectively with the county.
Right, right. But we have that and we can still look at just that portion. And that was never set in stone. I understand that. It's just a concept, but.
Yeah, based on the conversations that I've heard tonight, a little bit different than what the plan was for the 2045 visioning and that taking, obviously not rushing it, right? So we're trying to, for this, we're really looking at how do we allocate our water moving forward and how do we want to see ourselves grow? Based on North 301, I think we can take the 301 master plan or visioning plan that is on the shelf. We review that, we look at it, and we really look at, we have two different sessions, right? This is the long-range plan, but then we look at 301 from Cossack north to kind of our northern boundary, which is the Wanaker property. And we can move quickly on that. We settle that, we get direction, and we say, okay, based on the visioning plan that's in place or that's, that has been agreed to, we can make recommendations based on that. Then we can move into the 2045 visioning plan. That's my suggestion, because this is going to take a lot longer.
Correct. I agree.
If we, if we pull the plan off the shelf and we review that and we tweak it, and then we can say this is what we want to see.
Identify the current users and, you know, how, and we look at, you know, what's the best use and look at both sides of the road or whatever, but I think that's a great approach.
And I think that what we should do is part of all that is look at the different commercial zones and see what their permitted uses are. And then we have an idea of what we want on the front of the road. I mean, you know, we can drive down State Road 56 at Wesley Chapel, Bruceby Down. All of them have really, you know, in my adulthood, developed overnight with all these commercial things on the front and all these subdivisions behind them. And remember, we don't really want these subdivisions, but I think if we look and see what the three commercial zones permit, we can figure out how we want to zone it. Maybe we come up with a new zone even of different things that will have a lesser impact on 301, but provide, you know, that common typical use. I don't know.
No, that's well said. I think that's exactly what we need to do is look at that. Right product, right place.
So when would the council like to meet to discuss the North 301 visioning document?
Point out, on the 6th, we already have scheduled a city council meeting, right?
I am, 13th, 13th, 13th.
Okay, so the 13th, and then the 20th is Martin Luther King. And then the next is the 27th. So really, in terms of Mondays, you know, and typically we have a CRA meeting on the 20th, on the 27th. So really, if we're going to do it, it needs to be the 13th, right?
No, that, well, the 13th's a regular council meeting. If you want a special meeting.
I was gonna say, I don't know that we, I don't know that we, if we're gonna do something with the planning commission together, I don't know that.
Or maybe even like, you know, when do you meet? The third Tuesday for planning? Let's do it the 21st with them.
And do it earlier, earlier night, you know, I mean, because this is not.
I think, yeah, I don't believe we do, so we should be okay to do it.
Can we do the format of the workshop where you kind of do your, what you just did there? And then we move into the 301, because that's going to be a little bit separate from that, and then we can go back to that. I mean, does that make sense to where we, I mean, if we get logged down in the weeds on the entire city thing and then we still haven't stopped that issue?
I think we do them, my recommendation is we do them completely separate. Let's, let's set a date for the 301 vision plan. Let's do the 301 vision plan.
Well, then that one we could do on a council meeting night then.
And then let's move, let's set a date for this completely separate, because it's going to.
Yeah, well, then that one is going to, I think, take way too long. On a council meeting then.
I would like to suggest, though, that we sit around a table together. Being able to sketch and bring tracing paper and talk about, you know, what is the use of this and what's the use of that? And really kind of use it as a design charade as to what we envision or what the planning commission recommends and what the planning, and what, you know, the planning staff recommends, those kinds of things, I think, is better when we're all sitting around a table together. And then maybe then the council meeting follows that. What do you think about that?
And I can't sketch, but I could, we could have a white paper board, you know, where we could write things down.
Like we did with the mobility plan.
Right, right. You know, you have, you know, you write things down.
Markers and, so the 21st, is that what we're looking at?
Well, that, no, that would be for the, for the visioning that you're talking about, yes.
Now, where we're talking about that for this, that's going to be.
Right, that's why I'm saying the 21st for that.
Well, you need time to, you need time to get the other stuff.
Yeah, right.
There's a lot we have to prepare, as you've seen, before we jump into public workshops. We got to create the survey, create all the images, there's a, like the process we just went through.
Let's do the 301, North 301 first.
Right.
And talk about what we have.
Just that one area from Cossack to the northern boundary of this? And that's two character districts.
We are zoning districts and all that.
That's what I would suggest.
And then do, how long do you need? You need, you want to do something the first or second week in February then?
Wait, hold on, hold on, let, all right, so.
Let's just start with this other.
Yeah, that's what we, Tammy and I had talked about, trying to have something ready by then.
So the, on the 13th, we can do the 301.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we can get that done.
Okay.
Just those two character.
Just those two character districts.
Right, so.
At a, at a meeting, at a, at a six o'clock meeting.
So my suggestion is let's move council to five o'clock.
Okay.
Do council at five, it goes to whatever time, and we do a workshop immediately following. If you can be here at five, same as a CRA meeting, we just start council at five, run it however long it runs, and then we move right into the workshop.
Yeah, and then.
And we'll try to keep the agenda light on the 13th. We try to keep this one light as well.
Randy and Clyde, do you think we could get the planning commission here on a Monday night? Okay.
We'll tell them tomorrow that it's on the 13th.
Okay, we'll tell them, okay.
And then I think Todd and the team need time to create surveys and create the documents that are needed for this, for the overall plan. So maybe we give the team time to go back, determine exactly how much time is needed to create the documents, and we bring that back before council, maybe on the 13th, for some proposed dates to do this portion of the vision.
That's fine.
Sounds good.
Yeah, because that one is going to take more time, so.
And we're not rushing.
We're, but it gives us time to be able to talk together, because we really are going to have to talk things out. Yeah.
So we have the direction on that. Any other questions, Todd?
Nope.
Now I'm going to move on to, move on to the city manager report.
Your planning, your planning people just probably had a heart of art failure. But you guys will be ready.
Got the next long talker coming up. Kevin Weiss, City of Zephyr's Public Information Officer. Ricardo, do you have the updated rendering? Okay, so last month, I brought forward the idea for the lobby wall sign in the first floor. And you all had recommended that we raise it and make it slightly smaller. So the vendor has done that, making it approximately 108 inches wide by 72 inches tall. And they also provided a sample. The back of it, it's, there's a cutout for where the light would go.
This is the size that Z would be?
No.
No, this, this is just a sample cutout, yeah.
Just the material.
Yeah, the material, so it's about one inch thick, PVC, vinyl. So it's high enough to where you might still be able to see it if we have that Baduco structure in there, so.
Our mobile, our mobile art display area.
So I, after the meeting last month, I sent your all's comments and actually the audio file from everything you all had said and suggested to the vendor, so he could evaluate it and make changes as needed. So now I just want your all's thoughts and.
I think if that's a scale representation, that's six by eight and a half feet is probably big enough. If that's, if that's a scale representation they put in there, that, that looks good and it does allow some space underneath for doing some other things that we may want to do.
Yeah, if we want, ever want to do pictures, awards, things like that, there's ample space for that, I think, so.
I have a question. Did they do a mock-up like we talked about and bring it out so that you could look at it?
A cardboard cutout? I can ask for that again.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like you to do that, just because I'm, I want you to ask yourself this question. Who is this sign for? So if the idea is to be able to see it from the exterior when you drive down the road, that's one thing. But if, if it's for the, if it's for people inside the space, you really should see a person inside the space looking at this thing. I think you're going to find that it's still a little too big.
Okay.
My recommendation would be five feet by seven and a half feet and lower it a little bit. I think, you know, again, this is something I do all the time. I think you're going to find that when they do the cutout and they put it on the wall and you stand there, you look at it, you go, oh, wow, that's kind of big. So it, I will defer to whatever you decide ultimately, but.
Yeah, I'll ask them again for that, so. I know they've been working on the Hercules Park sign in just as well, so they've been a little tied up. But yeah, I will follow up. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Energy, you have anything else?
Oh, I got all kinds of items this evening. So I will go quick, quick update, Tina Joe's payment was made today for essentially 2023's dues or lease. We're still missing four months. We gave them time to get those in, you know, give them to the end of the month. So he said he would come in today, make the payment, payment was made, so we're working closer, we're getting closer. A big thank you to APS, Asphalt Paving Systems, the parade Saturday evening, our street sweepers down. Shane made a call to APS, they came out and swept the streets for us, sent a driver with the equipment and took care of the downtown for us. I'll say it was probably one of the messiest, it's the messiest I've seen downtown after an event this year. People just left stuff everywhere, so kudos to the, to the crowd, to the team, Main Street and Streets Parks for the parade and the cleanup on that. Speaking of the parade, Baduco had a representative here, and I won't go into the whole conversation, but her comment was it looked like a holiday movie as she was watching the parade go by. So I thought that was pretty nice. We also, Nathan and I have a meeting with the FAA on the 19th out at Skydive City. Hopefully, we're getting close to being able to accommodate Skydive City's wants and needs and our wants and needs to be able to, you know, receive our grant dollars again from the FAA. Probably the biggest thing is the appropriations request for 2025. We need to have a conversation. The issue is, as I found out the other day, is that our legislative delegation meeting is on January 7th. We do not have another meeting between now and then, and we have to submit projects to the delegation for consideration and support. So I'm not sure how the council wants to handle it. If we want to have a special workshop to discuss appropriations requests, we would have to schedule it between now and I would say probably the end of the year.
Well, I would say that you can meet with us individually to see what we have. And then it would just come down to prioritizing in a meeting, I would think. Because we'll have to obviously choose between a handful of ideas.
So I would say we need to, and I don't know the number, they typically tell me each year, but I would say no more than, than three, no more than three requests that we, that we submit.
Correct, yeah.
I think there's going to be a high priority on stormwater this year, just saying. Stormwater.
I was going to say just do that.
So, I mean, we can, we can pick stormwater projects and we can submit those. Okay, so I think what we can do is we have a project, one is Zephyr Park. We've submitted that for several years and it's stormwater related. So it's both park improvements, but stormwater. And then we can look at stormwater projects that we have that we can, we can request. If council's okay with that, we'll, we as a staff will, will focus on stormwater projects and that's it.
Are there any other shovel-ready kinds of projects that have been kind of pushed to the wayside? Maybe storm, maybe sewer, water sewer, just in case, you know?
I will look and see. I'm not aware. I believe everything's been pretty well-funded.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I support that, that decision then to focus on storm.
Oh, yeah, the other item that we probably could have is the tea hangers. You know, we have a large waiting list at the airport for tea hangers. I think that's something that we probably need to talk about with Nathan in conjunction with FDOT funding, FAA funding, and making sure that within the ASAP, I don't know what that stands for, but basically the planning document for, or maybe it's the JSEP, the planning document for the airport, where that falls in years. So that's something that could be added that's airport-related, so, and that's a revenue generator, right? We're, we're pretty much 100% short for the terminal. So we could look at the terminal funding, but we've also, I say we, Nathan and Mosin have had conversations with FDOT, excuse me, and the FAA about potential funding, but it would push the construction of the terminal out, I think to 27. But some potential funding through the JSEP. Correct, yeah. So that's all I have for this evening.
Let's see. I skipped, I skipped the mayor there somehow. Well, we'll go back to the mayor.
I'm trying to get that. Yeah, I know, we're way, way past the times. I apologize, everybody. It's been a long night. But I think you know that I had been working on trying to get our pantries back stocked. So today, I want to make sure I thank Public Works. They were out there at 7:00 AM this morning, helping, the truck showed up at 5:30 this morning. And Public Works got ahold of Shane at 7:00. He, they quickly got forklift over there. We ended up with being able to help 14 pantries, 22 pallets of food, 33,700 pounds of food that was given out today. It was a huge deal for these people, and I know that it's not something the mayor usually does, but it's something that I could do, and I felt strongly that we needed to do that for our community after the hurricane, everybody's suffering. So I, I'll tell you about some of the stories today from these pantries. So the, they came from my, my church, and we have a huge humanitarian project, program in my church. So I requested, I requested it. humanitarian project, program in my church. So I requested, I requested it. I wasn't sure if I was going to get it. So it came from Salt Lake City. So the trucks, yeah. So, but when it came, it was supposed to be non-perishable. We ended up with six pallets of cheese. And I say cheese, beautiful blocks of cheese. And I had a panic mode of it can't sit outside, you know? Shane told me it can't. And quickly, we were able to call the pantries, and they were beyond welcome. They said they never get cheese. So they, 540 blocks of cheese today, plus 16 other items. So it was a huge blessing for our community. And I just wanted to thank, you know, let you guys know that we had done that. And I felt great about it. Parade, it was amazing this year. The parade was just fantastic. I miss not being able to see it. Dang, I like being the spectator. But we literally ran. It was a little too fast. We ran, we gave, we, we were able to give out it, we had around 5,000 of those. Yes. And then we gave away the rest of them today. The food pantries were happy to give away the rest of the Panatones today. They're going to put them in their bags.
That's a correct pronunciation, Billy.
Panatones. I know what it is. Come on. So I just appreciated that. And then we have COM, Citizen of the Month is next Wednesday at 7:45. Could one of you guys do that for me, with me? Does anybody have next Wednesday morning, a week from, it's the 18th?
It's with Mike.
I know it does. You can't either. Okay. Okay. I know you can't, Charlie. That leaves you.
Hey, man, Lance isn't here.
Lance isn't here either.
I could probably do it the 18th.
Okay. I just would like somebody from.
You have to remind me, though.
I will remind you. 7:45 Chick-fil-A, okay.
It's been a while since I've done it anyway, so.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I wanted somebody from city council to be there. So, all right, that's all I have. Thank you, guys. Thank you for being patient. And 8:30, I know.
I bounce back to city attorney.
Only have about 30 minutes worth of, no, I'm just. I have nothing.
I don't know, but somebody's going to get fined. We had to turn off.
I'll go with Councilwoman Wilkins and start on the side.
Nothing for you, City Attorney. I think he was joking. Okay, good. Well.
I'm out anyway.
I first wanted to start with the, our tree lighting. What a huge success that was, right? You know, I mean, I remember the first time we did, there's like six people there. Now we had a big crowd. And Santa and Mrs. Claus were a big hit. And the carolers, I think that was really a great way to start, to really kick off the holiday season. Also, wanted to thank the volunteers and, and the participants at our Festival of Lights Parade, which was probably a record crowd this year. Also, to thank Baduco regarding this cakes for distribution. I think people were happy to get those. I think some of the kids might have been a little bit like, oh gee, what's this? You know, but the moms and dads were very happy, yeah. I, one, one little, and thanks to Public Works personnel too, because I just saw in our police, our police ZPD representatives were out there. Lorenzo was helping me carry boxes. I mean, it was, at the end, we were, we were really, our hair was on fire. I think that we just need to do a little bit better job coordinating for Founder's Day. We didn't have any identification on the float, so they, people didn't even know it was city council. So we just need to, and, and, you know, we can do that if we just plan ahead, a couple of weeks ahead. But I'm grateful for Public Works and, and Main Street always pulls it together for us so that we have someplace to sit and ride. So it's great. Thank you. Nothing further for me.
Alvin Proctor?
Well, I don't have much. But first of all, this is our last meeting of the year, and I just want to wish everyone a very merry Christmas and a great new year. And that's all I got.
Oh, well, I'll take up your time.
Please do.
I just want to say, you know, I'll say it quickly. Main Street just was off the charts at home, and was great.
We reached out to Kimley Horn today. We have a meeting set up for Wednesday morning, I believe it is, to have a conversation on it. Yep. Notice proceed was signed. I'm not sure where we are, because they had to actually be enlarged because of the cantilever structure. The, the footers had to be bigger than what was originally designed. So they're working on now making it a, I think, 10, three foot wide, or three foot deep, 10 foot wide in the length of the, of the structure. Yeah. So instead, it had originally, I don't know what the square footers for each upright post. Now they're, they had to, the engineer looked at it and said, because of the cantilever, the wind loading on it, they had to go three foot deep, 120 foot long, 10 foot wide. So that's being redrawn now, or I guess added. So Shane had to work with the contractor, because there's a cost difference. And so there's, Public Works will be self-performing some of the work to, to keep everything within budget that was approved by council. So that should start. I'll get an update on the new start date. So. Uh, for the gates to be fabricated. Correct. Yep. I do not have an ETA on that. Contracts are signed. We're waiting, just waiting for them to start. They're hoping to start this week. But they're waiting on a third-party vendor for the gates. So I mean, if we get the fence up, the fence repaired, you still have the gate issues, park's still closed. So what he's trying to do is get all the material here, get started to essentially comes to Zephyr Hills, does all the fence repairs and leaves, instead of, you know, having to jump back and forth between here and other locations.
And yeah, kudos to, kudos and thanks to Main Street, Public Works, Police Department, and all those involved in making those hallmark holiday movie events, the tree lighting and the parade and all that. And as Councilman Proctor said, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And let's not forget about our Christmas party, city Christmas party on Friday, too. With that, meeting adjourned.
Yeah, but we're doing.